The October 26, 2023 City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting is now called to order. We will begin by receiving communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item. However, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed in our later regular commission agenda for discussion and our possible action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? As there's no, nobody will move to item three, which is communications. Next on our agenda is communications, and we'll start with receiving a report regarding updates on the Parks Master Plan. James Tony, Director of Parks and Recreation, will be giving the presentation this evening. Welcome to the stage, sir.
Good evening, PZ Commission. Again, my name is James Tony, Director of Parks and Recreation, and I'm here to assist. These gentlemen back here are going to be giving you the presentation. But again, James Tony here, Parks and Rec. We are here to present to you our Parks and Trail Master Plan update. And I have our consultants that we're working with from EHRA, Tim and Chris, and they're going to come up and present to you where we are in the plan, the process moving forward. And then hopefully at the end of the presentation, they will engage some input from you guys as to what that plan should look like. So that towards the first quarter of the year, we'll be bringing it to Mayor and Council for adoption. And then that plan will be submitted to Texas Parks and Wildlife so that it could be on their shelf so that we can go out for future grant opportunities. So without further ado, instilling their thunder, I'll bring up Tim and Chris and a little lead you through the project.
Would you prefer us to hold our comments till the end, or should we just interject and make it informal as we're going?
That's your Tim question. At the end would be better.
We'll do it.
All right, here's your clicker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Tim May. I'm a landscape architect with EHRA here in the Houston area. So as Mr. Tony had introduced, we have been commissioned to write an update, I guess, the Parks and Trails Master Plan for the City of Friendswood. And so we're in that process right now. And so in your packet, you probably saw a brief outline, and we're just going to kind of duplicate that again with a little bit more information as we go through. And if I don't have a timer going, then, you know, I'll try not to take too much of your time. But we do want to make you aware of what's going on and receive that input, as Mr. Tony said. So again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have, yeah. I may just have to, you know, do a song and dance here. So this is our introduction slides. As I said, I'm the practice area lead for, and this is off, by the way, Becky. So I may have to turn up here. Practice area lead for landscape architecture with EHRA. Also here tonight, Chris Gonzalez, he's our project manager. And Chris and I have been interviewing staff and various organizations and stakeholders, decision makers within the community to this point. And so what we're bringing forth is just that plan. So let's still get the next one, Becky. So the purpose of the Parks Master Plan, Parks and Trails Master Plan, is we'll look at a citywide plan with a 10-year outlook. And those projections that we, what we call projections are an assessment and recommendations moving forward in a 10-year window. But when we write one, we have a five-year update that's required by the state of Texas if you want to be, remain eligible for potential state grants and matching dollars. So this 10-year plan will need an update in five years, is basically what we're doing. So the purpose is, you know, what can we do for the city? And what are those grant opportunities, if any, that we can help improve? And so the reason is that we do this, it's necessary because of the changing demographics of the community. The community needs also some budgeting. That's always a big thing, you know, how are you budgeting for parks? And the operations and maintenance funding as years go, as the year goes on and on. Bottom line is this, this plan, if it's adopted, will be submitted to Texas Parks and Wildlife. And again, that'll be, make us eligible for state grant opportunities. So the task is to write this plan, again with that five-year outlook, but 10 years. We've already identified some projects with staff that says we have a shorter window than five years for some of our projects. And our plan will acknowledge those. And so this is a current layout of the City of Friendswood. If you look at the, from a trail standpoint and a park standpoint, what are some of those opportunities? So we always look for, especially in the Houston metropolitan area, we look for those connectivity points, and those are typically creeks and bayous for trails. And a lot of times, those park opportunities are along those same watercourses. So we want to be sure we acknowledge that. You have the three major creeks feeding Clare Creek, cutting the dices through the city. And so then we take a bigger picture, straight down from the satellite, and say, where are your parks today? And so we've identified, I know this is small print, but we've identified those parks. So as we go through this process, the state is, the state Parks Department will look and say, what is your radius between parks? What's your hierarchy of park? What are those, when we do the assessments, what are those that are in the park? As far as amenities and programming events? And so then that starts, again, makes the eligibility for granting a lot easier. So this is just a broad look. We've also shown some parks beyond the city limit line, and we do that with intention because if we're looking at trails and neighboring municipalities, how can we potentially connect to those trail systems and make a greater network of trails for the greater community? So next slide. So the categories of the plan are really, if you boil it down, are quite simple. The plan is going to be a bound copy, and we'll have basically four chapters in it. The first two, the plan introduction and the context, what are we doing, why are we doing it? Kind of those couple leading slides. The next one is the community background. The state of Texas, these, the first two chapters are really requirements of the state for the eligibilities. But the second one, Chapter B, is the community background. We'll look at the demographics, the history, the changing demographics from a census standpoint, potential growth, and all that sort of thing. And all those, we're building the foundation for our grant opportunities. Then we get into the assessments, and then finally the recommendations. So again, the categories A and B, those go quick. I'm not going to dwell a lot on those, but we'll go to the next one is the assessments. So when we do the assessments, we are meeting with stakeholders, decision makers within the community. And so this is a list and the dates that we've done. The check marks are who we've already talked to and taken notes on, received that input. The open boxes are yet to be done. So like next week, we're meeting with the CEDC to get their input. We still have to get in front of council. We still have to do public engagement meetings. So that's still in front of us. So we're here tonight to update and inform you guys where we are in the process. And then at the end, ask for any input you may have from a Parks programming. What would you like to see as leaders of the community? The assessments, like I said, we've already done the, as of today, we've done inventory and photography of the parks. And then in late September, with staff and using one of the Friendswood buses, we went to these 14 parks. And we spent time with staff, Chris and I, taking notes, understanding, more photography, and that sort of thing, and making those comments, what does staff see in the park? What are their issues with the park? What are they, what do they see as opportunities within the park? So we have looked at those 14 parks, and then, so that's the physical aspect of it. And then we looked at, what we still have to do is the trails. And the trails, quite honestly, we classify them as on-street or off-street. On-street is where we don't have a creek to connect to, or other parks, or green belts, or anything like that. So we have to look at on-street opportunities. Now, anything within a right-of-way of a thoroughfare is basically considered on-street as far as this plan is concerned. So it may not be physically inside the curb, in the traffic lanes, but it could be in the right-of-way. Okay? And then, so that's the on-street. The off-street is obviously those creeks and bayous and those opportunities that we can make trail connections. The next assessment we did was facilities. And so in early, early October, we went to these facilities, these 12 facilities with staff, again, riding in that same tour of the city bus that the seniors use, and received those inputs at each of those facilities. And we learned something during this tour, more than just what are these facilities, but we learned that Parks Department at the City of Friendswood takes care of not only the grounds of these facilities, but the building and everything inside it. And so a little bit unusual, but it brings in a different level of complexity to the plan. And so, you know, that was, so we not only went to the grounds, but we went inside. And if you've never been to the animal shelter, you don't talk to your friend. You won't be able to hear. So anyway, those were the facilities that we've talked, we've already been to. So that was done in October. And so our next deal is, the fourth chapter is the recommendation process. So everything we've done in the assessments, now we're going to start to build, and the input we've received from the community and all the decision makers and stakeholders, now we start to make these recommendations. So the whole process, so that's our next step. Starting in November, we should, mid-November, maybe, maybe right after Thanksgiving, we'll start writing those recommendations. The process of writing those recommendations, we'll submit those, we'll write them, submit those at staff level. They'll have a chance to review it. And we're not talking just Park Staff. This is distributed citywide staff members. You know, every frame, everything from administrative to all the various departments, engineering, parks, all that. So, but the goals are this, what are the park goals and priorities? We'll look at existing park upgrades, enhancements and improvements. Trails, facilities, the current facilities and their programming, and the future facilities and programming. And the reason I separated that is because as we toured those facilities and those staff members at each of those facilities, whether it's a fire station, city hall, animal shelter, those sort of things, we visited with staff there, and they said, we really need this, or we really need this. Or, you know, they gave us that input from a facility standpoint, how that they can better function, or how the challenges that they're having. And then lastly, we'll look at the real estate. If we're going to be eligible for grants, then we have to provide a certain amount of parkland per capita. And so that's why, if you recall, the Chapter B talked about demographics and census information and that sort of thing, projections. So the real estate is what do you have and what do you need? And what you have is what is the potential for that, for parks? And that could not necessarily be a undeveloped parkland. It could be just undeveloped city land that could potentially become a park. And then therefore, it saves money in real estate purchases. And then the future land needs. Again, you put, the old-fashioned guy in me goes, you put a compass and strike a radius around each park, and where are the gaps? Where do they not overlap? That's where you're going to need a future park. And so that exercise will go through that process to make our recommendations. So this is your city parks, again, the same map we showed earlier, city parks with the trails. Most of the trails that we show in the faint purple up there, like at the top of the slide, that's actually a county park within the city limits. So they have a trail system, but it's important that we know that that trail system's there, and how can the city trail system or the city network potentially connect to it? And so what we're doing here is we're seeking the parks' input. We want to know what the community, what this body thinks of the current park conditions and any physical improvements that may be needed that you've seen. And we'll even touch on the programming. You know, what is the current Parks Department offering to the community as far as activities or events, that sort of thing? Is it adequate? Do you have suggestions in that regard? I can tell you the City of Friendswood Parks Department and the programming I've seen, it's excellent. They offer some tremendous opportunities for the citizens of Friendswood. And so I think it's something that we can really build on, something that's already good. And then we'll look at, from a park standpoint, the future. What do we need in future parks? Again, if we've got a swimming pool here, do we need a swimming pool over here? If we have a rec center here, do we need one over here? If we have a senior center here, do we need a second one, and where does that go? That's what we're talking about, future parks, park amenities and future land needs. Okay? So that's part of our input that we're kind of wanting. And then from a trail standpoint, kind of the same process. If we want to minimize, which I'm sure everybody does in the community, not just you as decision makers and leaders of the community, you know, you want health, safety and welfare for people using the parks and trails. So we want to, if we can, minimize the on-street parking and maximize, or, excuse me, on-street connectivity and maximize the off-street connectivity. Again, it's safety issues. And when we talk about safety, it's not just physical body safety, but it's also can the police department patrol and provide that protection to the community from a safety standpoint? Can emergency vehicles reach a park by a trail, that sort of thing? That's the sort of considerations we take in that. And then the facilities, we kind of touched on that a little earlier. What are those facilities currently? What's lacking? What's good? What can we do from a needs, future needs standpoint for that? With the current facilities, new facilities? And then obviously, if you have new facilities, you probably will need land, new land, or maybe use existing land. So the goals input that we're seeking from the commission tonight is to have just a dialogue. We're kind of putting you on the spot here a little bit maybe, but a dialogue on the parks, trails and facilities. Keeping in mind with parks, we're looking at active and passive recreation opportunities, environmental and native habitat preservation. These are just some ideas to help. Do we need more sports facilities, for example? And if we do, what are those sports? Do we have enough baseball, softball, soccer? Pickleball? Disc golf? That's another one, right? And then that hierarchy of parks, city park, regional park, local or neighborhood. Again, that hierarchy is a national park standard. You know, the city park serves a greater, that's where everybody, that's a draw. Everybody comes to it, much like Stevenson Park here. Everybody comes to it, they get in their car and drive. Whereas the neighborhood park is, who, how can I walk? Can I walk a quarter mile and be in a park? That sort of thing. So trails, alternative transportation, we're basically talking scooters, bicycles, wheeled type transportation, but not motorized necessarily, or combustion engine. Healthy lifestyle activities, you know, not just walking, is it jogging? Is it exercise stations, fitness stations? Is it yoga, plazas or nodes and that sort of thing? And then facilities, which may lead to new and additional recreational programming. This department offers, like I said earlier, offers a tremendous menu of items that people can get involved in. But are there others that can be done? I'm sure Mr. Tony's staff knows those, but we want to hear from you guys. What are potentially those opportunities? So with that, I've kind of given you, kind of rushed through this. I know you have a long agenda tonight, and so I don't mean to hurry it, but I'm going to back off a little bit and let you guys discuss or deliberate and give us that feedback, if you would.
So just to keep it a little coordinated, we'll just kind of go in order. Commissioner Ras, you got any?
I have a couple of questions. My first question is, when you're looking at parkland opportunities and land use and future or additional land that the city might own, do you take into consideration parking lots separate from that? So we're looking at some things right now with the city with alternative parking and, you know, city lots versus onsite parking, and is that part of what you guys look at as well?
Yes, we do, to answer your question.
Because I can see where it wouldn't be in Parks and Rec, but it might be, I mean, it definitely is.
Especially with the hierarchy of parks that we talked about, city and local or regional parks, they need to have parking because people get in their vehicles and drive to them. So you got to have that adequate parking. The neighborhood parks, maybe not so much. We'll look at on-street opportunities. Can you parallel park along the curb of that park if people do choose to drive to it? But we try to locate those within a quarter to half mile of anybody.
Also, and maybe, maybe this is better for, better question for Tony, but I'm sure you guys have run across it. Just out of curiosity, are the Perry House and the Brown House, are those part of the city? Are those part of the parks? Or is that just strictly the historical society?
Yes, that would be strictly historical society. Now, we assist and facilitate and help them in areas, you know, where a need be. As you know, the city council does give them an annual contract, and that money comes out of our budget. So we do assist and help in that way.
So that's an indirect help, right?
Mr. Conrad?
I really don't know what to ask here. There's so many parts of this that Cheryl has some questions.
Okay. Mr. Cecil?
So I've heard different. So are we, are we low on parks percentage as our city? Have you done any analysis on that so far? And maybe, Mr. Tony, James, you know that, probably off the top of your head. How do we stack up in terms of percent area per population of parkland and that kind of thing?
Yeah, we are lacking in some areas.
So we need more land?
We need more land, we need more amenities in the park. If you will look at just basketball facilities, I mean, for a city our size, we should have more courts than we currently have.
When we compare to Bleak City or Alvin or, yeah, okay.
It was the torp is what is being used to determine how many types of, like I said, basketball courts that would be needed for a city of our size of 42,000. And it tells you in the book, hey, you need, for this amount of citizens, you need to have X number of basketball courts and so forth. So we are lacking in a lot of areas.
We tend to be a little short right now, and we'd like to have more. So on that, I was going to ask, teach me about the Forest Bend Park. That is Harris County Park, that doesn't include in this, count in this?
So the Forest Bend Park is a, that's an HOA park, okay?
Oh, that's a HOA park.
And so we have, with the help of our engineering team, we went in there and we created some drainage opportunities for the city and for the residents in that area. And as part of that, they've given us, I guess, 11 acres of that piece of property. And so 11 of those acres will be maintained by the Parks Department, as far as the mowing, the trails that's been established in there, and all the upkeep that goes in those 11 acres.
Has that already happened?
It is in the process right now, yes. I think the only thing that's left for the park for completion is the lighting. And so we're waiting on Harris County because Center Point is in charge of the lighting for that park, and they have it on their agenda, but they haven't brought the lights out yet. So as soon as the lights are installed, then the park will be open and available.
I have to say, I've seen what they've done out there with the water, and it looks, it looks very nice. I'm very impressed. But one thing I was going to comment on, the area on the sidewalk along 528, never gets mowed? Now I'm glad to see that I know who to talk to if it doesn't. I'm sure, I'm sure that'll get handled. Right now, it's entrance to Friendswood, and you see weeds that are six feet high along 528, so.
We will check to see who owns that and whose responsibility.
I think it's Tech Dot right now.
It is Tech Dot, but.
And so they are not necessarily as responsive as I know your group has been in the past. So I'm pleased to see we're upgrading. Yeah, you got to step up. The Deepwood facility, what's going on with that right now? Is that abandoned completely, or?
So there are no office space in the Deepwood, but it is currently used as a lay-down yard and a facility for some mechanical vehicle repairs and such. So.
So that wouldn't be eligible for a new parkland kind of thing? I was thinking, you know, geez, that's a kind of a flooded area, you really don't want to do much with it. And it kind of is close to the Imperial Estates leveled area that you might be able to put a trail between those two potentially, if there was something there. But if that's your only lay-down area, then you need one. I didn't know if you were planning on putting it up next to the, what I call the Red Lion, but I guess it's got a better name than that these days.
Yeah, right now, that's the only facility that we have that'll allow us to.
So you can't give that up to do the other? Okay, fair enough. Okay, and then you probably know, if you're going to stick around, the other item on our agenda is going to put in a bunch of trails and a bunch of amenities down off of the Whitcomb property, and that will be available, I guess. I guess that's going to the city, and so years from now, that'll be another opportunity to get that ratio up a little bit and another amenity for the population. Of course, there'll be more population, so then you need even more land, but it's a spiral. Yeah, right, it is, yeah. Thank you, that's all I had. I don't know as much about the parks as I should. I've been out to, the ones I've been out to, I've been always impressed with, but I don't go a tour of each of them. So I know there's a lot of smaller ones around that I discover every now and then, and I say, oh, look at that, so.
Anytime you have questions, we're always available to sit down and talk to the residents about our park system.
You always have been in the past, Mr. Tony, thank you.
Mr. Kerner?
So having raised two children in the city, one of the things that concerns me about some of our parks is the accessibility of them other than driving. And you've mentioned about Stevenson Park as a park you drive to. I think part of the reason it's a park that we drive to is because there isn't really safe pedestrian or bike trail access from some of the neighboring communities. So I'm curious, as part of your plan, are you looking at making some changes outside of trails? I'm really talking more about city street access, or bike lane access, or sidewalks, to make the parks more connected to the neighboring communities?
To answer your question, yes, that's part of our assessments. Accessibility is, you know, there's different levels of accessibility. We all, one, we looked at accessibility from an ADA, American Disabilities Act standpoint, and made sure that things are in compliance or getting there. And then we look at accessibility from a mobility standpoint and a maneuverability standpoint within the park itself. So that's part of our assessment process as well. We always are looking for opportunities that we can connect people by alternative means, foot, bike, scooters, whatever, roller blades, if they still do that. We're looking for those opportunities to get people out of a car and onto a trail and connecting to a park, and that helps the healthy lifestyle that Parks wants to promote.
So this is a question maybe for Mr. James, or maybe even not somebody here. It might actually even be for Trish. There are several, I'll call them bridges, but over creeks in our community that don't have sidewalk or bike paths across them. And I've seen some pretty dangerous activity where people are trying to cross that on the shoulders of the roads, specifically on 518 is what I'm thinking about. Is that, I presume that they're doing that to access either commercial businesses or park areas that are adjacent to some of those bridges? Is that part of this assessment? I asked my question a little bit differently because I know you're looking at it specifically from a park perspective, but I'm looking at a little bit broader perspective, citywide.
Yeah, this plan does not look at that. But there are other agencies and entities that do. So a group such as HEAC, they are doing a study right now, and they have plans that they're working with cities to incorporate bike transportation that'll connect, you know, the various cities to one another. So that would be more on their area.
Yeah, that's more connecting cities. I'm looking at internal to the city, trying to connect some of the park and, and community areas, but it sounds like that's outside the purview of this. Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Okay, Commissioner Bounce?
First, thank you all three for being here. We appreciate the information. Really, the only question I have is about, you were talking about safety and security of the people. Are there gonna be call boxes along the way of trails and things? So in case something happens, someone can, let's just say they, they get robbed and their phone is gone, boom, okay, how are they gonna get in touch with somebody?
Part of the, our, excuse me, part of our process of writing a master plan is we look at those as, as a recommendation.
Okay.
And, and so if those are needed from, especially from a hard-to-patrol area or, or, you know, we're, we're even going to pull the police department and get, you know, incident reports and see where those activities are and what, what can we do to maybe improve that. Uh, but that's going to be a, a high-level perspective. And then as, as these parks and these priorities are identified, then they use this tool that says, hey, we need call boxes, for example, or we need better lighting, or we need accessibility, that sort of thing. Those recommendations are gonna list that, that sort of information so that when that individual park or trail gets improved, that that becomes a program element.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna ask about lighting, but you touched on that, so.
Now, I won't keep you long, but just a couple general questions. When you talk about facilities, do, you're two separate organizations, but when you do the calculations, do the high school facilities count into those calculations? Like the soccer fields and such?
Uh, so it can. So we have an MOU agreement with the district so that they could use facilities. We can use their facilities. A classic example is Centennial Park. You have a junior high in the, inside of the park, and so they use our facilities, i.e. the fields for PE classes, and of course, the, the football field and all those things are, can be shared usage. And at times when they have availability, they've allowed us to use their facilities as well.
Okay. And then the goal of this is it, is it to recommend a set of projects to get to a certain plan? Or is it just saying, this is what we'd like, like to look like in five years, ten years? What, what is your end project? End product is a set of projects or is it just like a recommendation to get there?
Yeah, the, the goal, it's, it's really a, a two-part answer to that question. We, we set the goals, what do we want the park system overall to look like? And then we prioritize by park. And so that's, that's in conjunction with, with, with the Parks Department. You know, wears those needs based on the goals and the findings that the, that, that this plan has found. And so we'll prioritize those as, as a benefit. That, that's a tool that staff can then bring to the budget hearings and that sort of thing and start to plan for that future. That say, hey, grants, you know, grants are only done one time a year. So here's our grant opportunity, here's our project, it's priority one. The state of Texas will look at our plan, say, yes, it is priority one, here's the estimate, boom. And, and so it just increases that, the chances of winning that grant.
Perfect.
And the priorities do take into account the feedback that we get from the citizens when we have those town hall meetings that we put up on the board there. We'll have two, two public engagement meetings. Those engagements and those, the information from that will also help shape, you know, the plan's priorities.
Very good.
And I think I just had a couple more slides, but they were kind of closing slides. You know, the schedule, this is kind of what we're looking at. We've kind of said this, this was the initial schedule back in September, and due to the holidays, we, it may be bumping a little bit. But our goal here, if possible, is to try to get an adoption in March for the plan. So, but, but we, we still have several hurdles to, to, to get over and, and, and a lot of writing. And so we do have a schedule that we're trying to work for. And then I think, again, this is just the last slide for the, for the, for the trails or the parks and trails that, that currently exist in the city.
Do you have something else?
Will we yet get to see the final product before it goes pub, uh, complete? I mean, so, so there'll be a second one of these, except with more data?
But it'll, it'll have substance.
Right.
It'll have those assessments, those, those goals, those priorities. You'll have, it, it'll be a tangible deliverable.
Very good.
Will we get a copy of that prior to the meeting? That way we can look it over?
Hopefully we'll, we'll, we won't give it to you the night of.
There you go, thank you.
Did you have something?
One more question, and I'm sure, I think I already know the answer to this, but are you guys looking for other opportunities to share with, like, the Drainage District or Harris County Flood Control and things like that?
We, we actually just came from a meeting with the Engineering Department upstairs preceding this, this, uh, this meeting, that we were looking at half a dozen different projects that they have currently underway, mostly drainage-related. But how can, are there recreational opportunities that we can, we can, we can piggyback on either now or in the future? And so, yes, we're, we're looking at those opportunities such as that, so.
Well, I appreciate it. I know you guys have to work with a lot of different organizations, bring a lot of different opinions together, so we appreciate the effort and the information.
Well, thank you, and, and we appreciate you affording us a little bit of time to, to give you this update tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is to announce the next Planning and Zoning meetings. They have been scheduled for Thursday, November 16th, and Thursday, November 30th, 2023. And the Planning and Zoning 2023 Annual Retreat will be held on November 30th, 2023. Next, receive council liaison updates concerning action taken by the City Council on P&amp;Z-related items. Councilmember Branson? Oh, shoot, Hanks, sorry. Okay, thank you. We will continue communications with comments from our commissioners. Commissioner Bounce?
No, sir.
Commissioner Kern?
I have nothing to add this evening.
Commissioner Sessom?
I just wanted to mention, I don't know if everybody's noticed, that the poles are going up, the light poles that we've been talking about for several, long time. They, I drove down the, the street the other day, I saw sixteen on one side, eight on the other, so they're going up quickly. When I talked to Stephen Ray, he said there might be as many as a hundred and eighty-seven light poles put up in downtown. I'm not sure you can fit all those, but that's, that's, that's the plan. He said it might, it'd probably be a little less than that, but not much. Uh, and so we're going to be well-lit at some time in the not-too-distant future. And so admire it, there's the brown pole, they just stick up in the, up in the air right now. They're just, they're aluminum, but they look wood-grained kind of thing, and I think they're very attractive, so. Progress.
Mr. Conrad? Mr. Ras? Becky? Aubrey? Okay, okay. I skipped myself.
Yes, you did.
Doing, doing great tonight. Once again, apologize, Trish. But that, that's it for me also. Next is our consent agenda. These items are considered routine and ministerial in nature and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the commissioner so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, consider approving the minutes of the Planning, Zoning Regular Meeting held on October 12th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes unanimously? Okay, next in the agenda are our action items. According to Planning, Zoning Rules and Procedure, all actions of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of a simple majority of the commissioners present at such commission meetings. Item A, consider making a recommendation to City Council concerning the requested zone classification change for property located at 3801 FM 528 Road, which is further described as 106.472 acres of land situated in the Sarah McKissick League, abstract number 549, Harris County, Texas, being all the restricted reserves A and C Clear Creek Community Church, Friendswood, a subdivision plot of record at film code number 691601, Harris County map records, and being the residue of a called 135.778 acre tract of land conveyed to Clear Creek Community Church as described by deed recorded under Harris County Clerk's File Number 20150231965, City of Friendswood, Harris County, Texas. To change from Plan Unit Development Ordinance 2015-18 to a Revised Plan Unit Development, PUD, to allow mixed-use development and an amendment to the Future Land Use Map 2021 to change the designation of the described 106.472 acres from public and semi-public to retail and mixed-use. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Ras, second? Stuck your hand up. Aubrey, Becky, any staff comments?
Um, yes, I just did want to make a point of a few changes that were made to the proposal. Emailed those out late this afternoon. The summary of those changes is that the, the maximum building height originally proposed in the regulation matrix was six stories and ninety-foot building height across the board. The building height proposal has been, and it kind of conflicted with the site plan that showed that the buildings were gonna be four-story. So the regulation matrix has been amended to just be four stories. So they removed the six-story reference. And then lots one through five, which you're gonna front FM 528, the maximum height on those buildings would be forty feet, which is in line with our current CSC zoning. And then lots seven through twelve, maximum height would be seven stories, or seventy feet, four stories on those buildings. We also got clarification because the mixed-use buildings on the site plan could potentially include some residential. So the units per acre of twenty-nine was added to those lots. There's nothing set in stone for that yet, but just want to leave the option on the table for that. Lot twelve, the multifamily residential, the previous regulation matrix had that at thirty-five units per acre, and they have reduced that to twenty-nine units per acre. I think that was pretty much the gist of the changes.
Okay, just a quick question with the, the changes you've mentioned. Are they part of the, the material that we're voting or voting on right now? Or do we have to amend our motion to include those changes?
I think you need to amend the motion to include this change.
Okay.
I thought some of that was in, in the density information at the end of the package for this item. Is that not?
Those were, there were some additional backup material, the density comparisons of what other cities allow, and then of all the other apartment complexes in Friendswood. It was just some backup.
Okay, so then I need to state.
I would have the, excuse me, continue your conversation and then possibly amend it after the discussion.
That was gonna be my question, okay, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Now we'll go with the discussion, and we'll start with Commissioner Kern.
See, I asked, most of my questions, I think last time we talked about this, two weeks ago. So I don't know that I have any other questions other than to state that I like the fact that, that we've adjusted the height and the, the changes that, that Aubrey mentioned, so I don't have any further questions on it.
Okay, sorry, I can't hear back there.
No problem. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself since you're there.
Sure, sure. Evening, Louis Tanos with Tanos Development Group.
Good. Commissioner Ras?
Okay, I'd like to second her thoughts. I, I like these changes, feel good about them, the four stories, the seventy, forty-foot. And I have one suggestion to make, and I briefly talked to Becky about this earlier, and Louis, you already know about this. Changing lots six, seven, nine, and ten to, to read that residential is only allowed above the first commercial floor, similar to what we do in the Downtown District already, and I know that's what they were already planning. We're just thinking it ought to be in writing somewhere. And that's really my only comment about the development. I have a secondary comment, piggybacking on that, that I think as a commission, we ought to go back and look at the zoning ordinance and look at revising the units per acre at some point in the near future.
Very good.
That's all I have.
Mr. Conrad?
I'm in agreement with all of that. This looks so much better, having the, the height of the buildings, how many stories, as well as the, the amount of units per acre, twenty-nine possibility, looks good.
Okay, Mr. Sessom?
So, yeah, I missed last week's meeting. I got to watch it, and I thought most of the things were covered quite well by, by the team here. It's a very impressive development, obviously. I especially like the gravel paths and trails near Clear Creek, and the tree mitigation plan is top-notch. I'm, I'm pleased to see our new tree mitigation plan is, is working, and I think it's, it's all working out well. I also pleased you planned sidewalks along FM 528. Thank you for bringing that up. Just mentioned the Whitcomb property is the largest and last major undeveloped commercial area in Friendswood. Many have tried unsuccessfully to develop this area. I'm hopeful this developer's impressive track record makes him successful. He's doing, you're doing a lot of good things for the city, and if anybody can crack this nut, I, I feel confident you're the guy, Mr. Tanos. A question for you, Aubrey. Does the city plan to install a traffic light at, at the Black Hawk Bay Area Boulevard? Or do we know that yet? We're, we're gonna extend the road all the way to Bay Area Boulevard, and now you'll have a two-lane road coming out. Has been any discussion about that yet?
We actually have two traffic lights planned.
But not at.
You're talking on 528, I think.
At Bay Area Boulevard.
Bay Area, oh, gotcha.
Um, I don't think so. It actually, where that connection is made, it's a median. And I know there's been discussion about, like, ambulance traffic being able to make a left-hand turn.
Yeah.
Um, because it is a median.
Or fire station or whatever, right?
Yeah, so I don't think we've gotten that far.
It's still working.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand. I wouldn't think many people would want to take a left out of that. They'll probably go the other way, but the fire station might, and that's a good point. I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
Okay, so in progress. In the same area, there's an area between this property and the Drainage Canal. It's kind of a triangular, it's green, therefore it's single-family residential on the, on the plot plan, on the layout. Is this part of the Brookside Intermediate Land? They own it, even though it's SFR, the, the school owns it?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And it was never rezoned, it just left as that? Well, you have an SUP for the school, I saw.
Yeah, yeah, I think their SUP, excuse me. I think their SUP just covers the front portion where the school is actually located. They've never done anything with this rear tract. But part of the project is, they are working with us. We're gonna provide the, well, us. It's a group effort. They are donating the land. They are gonna get another driveway to their school parking lot from the new Black Hawk extension.
So, so that's this little area right down in here that I was seeing. It's, uh.
Yes.
And it looked like there was a little parking lot being put in there too. And I saw, I take it that's, what, what's the intent of that parking lot?
The parking lot is for access to the park.
Okay, so that's for residential, for, for non-residents to come in and, and enjoy the amenities, didn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I see. And that is on the school property and being built by Mr. Tanos? Or, okay, so that's why it's part of his development plan drawings?
Yes, we're also adding detention, I believe, yeah, we're adding detention to the school as well.
Yeah, I think we're at, yeah, I think he's providing detention for some future projects that they may want to do.
So that's in the lower right-hand corner there, where it's carved out of the trees, has a small parking lot, and, and, uh, not on your property, but it's being built, thank you, okay.
I think that portion is actually gonna be dedicated to the city because we're gonna, the city will own that parking lot.
Everything on that screen is dedicated to the city. Those are restrooms for park, uh, visitors, parking lot, and then a little bit of a pond there.
Got it, okay, so someone could come in off Bay Area Boulevard without going through the whole area, built-up area, park there and, and walk around the trails or bike or whatever they're gonna do. going to do.
4.2 miles of trails, yes.
Got it, got it. I couldn't make that drift. Does the city plan to retire the Forest Bend drain, this is a question I'm just curious about. I take it this is going to replace the Forest Bend Fire Station?
I believe so, yes.
So, they would retire that, and that could potentially be parkland, or something else, or add it on to, I guess, what is now going to be a Friendswood Park? Okay, yeah, okay. I noticed when I went through the SUP, or the list of approved items that we can put in here, there was a cemetery. I said, what the heck are we thinking about with the cemetery? And then I walked around back there, and I said, oh, there's a cemetery here. Where on this does that show? Can you kind of describe that for me, Mr. Tanos?
It is in the bottom-left corner of the multifamily, probably public access to it and add a historical marker.
Okay, so it's not in the grass area, it's in the.
I have not seen it.
You can see a square. If you go to the bottom-left, you can see a square there in the coloring. It's not identified really good on that.
Does someone have a cursor that can kind of point to it? Oh, okay.
There's a dark gray.
Yeah, I think I see about three buildings up from the very bottom.
Yeah, the very first one, yes.
Okay. And you're going to put a little fence around it? I guess you'll be maintaining that, or the property owner will be maintaining that?
That'll be maintained through the property.
Add infinitum. Okay, okay. So, I saw, my next question got answered partially. So, lots six, seven, eight, and nine are designated mixed use. I guess they still are. There's been some changes lately. I think those are the mixed-use ones, maybe. That was the way it was this morning to me.
All of, yeah, all of the uses in the permitted use table are allowed on all the lots. We just further clarified the density.
Right.
On.
So, six, seven, eight, and nine.
It's actually six, seven, and nine. Lot eight is going to be a hotel.
Oh, that's the, right, okay. So, that would not be.
Only six, seven, and eight would be mixed use.
Six, seven, and nine, yeah.
Excuse me, six, seven, and nine.
And so, I was going to ask how many, approximately, how many residences there might be in those? When we used a 29 factor, which I think was just pulled out because it matched the other number, and everybody seemed to feel comfortable with that number. So, I don't think there's been a lot of math to it.
The maximum allowable at that density would be on lot 792, on lot 680, and on lot 989. We don't even bother counting on lot 10 and 11, because those are already designated for MIB.
Okay. Can you read those numbers to me one more time? So, seven was 92, eight was 80? No, not eight, no.
Lot six would be 80, and lot nine would be 89. But there's no guarantee that those are even going to exist at all. I mean, those are.
Right, that is an upper limit potential.
That's maximum limit potential, yes. Those could, lot six and nine could be medical office buildings.
Right, right, okay, good. Thank you. In the apartment complex area, lot 12, you show 780 parking spaces with a potential, a nominal residency of 500 units, which works out to about 1.6 parking places per apartment. So, if there's 175 one-bedrooms and 325 two- and three-bedrooms, which was the placeholder you put out there, that leaves, if the 175 units, 175 one-bedrooms get one parking spot, and the 325 get two parking spaces, I'm assuming a two- and three-bedroom would get two parking spaces. I know if I were renting a two-bedroom or three-bedroom, I'd want two parking spaces at least. That means that you need 825 parking spaces with no guest parking.
Well, we have a cross-reference, excuse me, we have a cross-access agreement parking with pretty much everything in here. I think our, the current matrix we use had a total needed parking spaces of 3,600.
Okay.
And we're only, I'm sorry. Let me, let me back up there. Yeah, 2188, and we're at 3,600. So, we have 1,400 additional parking spaces in what we need for the whole site.
So, you're figuring that if a guy, a person has a party at his two-bedroom residence and has three friends come over, that they would park in lot seven and somehow get through the gate?
I have additional parking all over the property, yes.
Yeah, and they would go through the gated area, somehow push a button or something to walk in.
Correct. And on top of that 1,400 extra to the matrix, we have an additional 200 that we've added for the church that's outside of our property.
Okay, okay. So, I guess, I guess usually I'm thinking the intent is, you have a gated area, people who are in the gated area stay in the apartment complex. But in this case, the gated area, there'll be people parking outside the gated area and walking in routinely.
Yeah, we have agreements going with the hospitality, with the mixed use for valet, for restaurants. We have all sorts of agreements going on. So, if they can't find a parking space with 1,500 extra parking spaces, one heck of a party.
Okay. Well, yeah, but they'll be, they may be walking quite a ways, but it's part of the, what they'll understand, I guess, going in.
Right.
How many hotel rooms do you anticipate in lot eight?
I don't have a count on that. I'm not the hotel developer. They will be here for council on the six.
Yeah, because I think it's going to probably be a question there, and they'll need it to do the final approval on that.
They'll be prepared for that, yes.
To understand kind of what the extent of this is.
The hotel is designed very boutique, not mass rooms. We do have enough space for 250 convention, wedding, or otherwise, and there will be full-service restaurant and bar and valet parking for that.
I had a bet with my wife as to whether it was a boutique hotel or not, and now you've told me, so.
Incredibly.
She wins, I order, I order lunch.
We don't want to go for the how many keys can we cram into that space.
It's just that the other hotel uses, the other hotel is not a hotel, it's a boutique hotel. You never get the two words separate, and I see that same here.
Yes.
Okay. I'm hopeful that this development will alleviate some of the traffic at the 528 Bay Area intersection, that people coming down 528 may cut the leg off a little bit. I know that there's an interior TIA, Aubrey, is not required, Transportation Analysis, but an external analysis of what's going on there on our existing streets. I would think we'd need to have something like that to understand the impact of this on 528 and Bay Area Boulevard.
So, the previous TIA that was done by Clear Creek Community Church identified the two fully lit intersections at Towns and Blackhawk.
For the church.
Yeah, for the church. It did take into some consideration that eventually the rest of that, this 106 acres would be developed as retail. And so, they're, like, they were only required to do the intersection at Towns at a certain point.
Sure.
But the ultimate traffic control was the two fully, you know, signalized intersections that's included in the project, so there's no point in doing another TIA, like.
What you're telling me is the output from that would only affect whether we put lights or not, and we're already putting lights in, so therefore, there's no useful course of action we take after getting that, other than knowing what it's going to do. I just, I worry about unexpected traffic issues that, you know, get surprises on this, but I'll let that go. Why did you choose roundabouts instead of stop, four-way stop signs?
Slow down the traffic within the development.
Don't stop signs slow down the traffic? I'll tell you, this to make my thinking visible. These will be the first two roundabouts in Friendswood. I moved to England, lived there three years, and I was terrified. The first two weeks I was there, almost got in several accidents because I didn't know how roundabouts worked, and everybody else did.
You and my wife both.
What's that?
You and my wife both.
There you go. So, I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be less of a learning curve for people to do what they're normally used to. Not that, I happen to like roundabouts. I think it's a superior method of keeping traffic moving as opposed to stopping it and such. I just worry that the learning curve for the drivers in Friendswood might be more than you want.
Well, the first thing it allows me to do is add more beautification to the property, so I can put lights and fountains in those roundabouts. I can put a place for kids to throw coins or something in their statues, benches.
Hopefully not in traffic, but okay, yeah.
Well, yeah, but I've got play areas and walkable areas all through the middle of this thing as well. And also, if you make the wrong turn, it's easier to keep going in a circle than it is to do a three-turn stop and go through a stop sign.
I've taken several loops in the UK, I understand.
Way easier to just go, oh, no, I missed it, and turn around and go around the loop again. The hope is to have those as two centerpieces, and I'd like to, you know, I haven't gotten totally there yet, but I'd like to design some pretty fountains with lights, something like that. That really draws attention and looks very pretty. I'm known for going a bit over the top on things. Again, ask my wife.
It's part of your charm, sir.
Yeah, so hopefully it's just lit up and beautiful.
Yeah, I can see how that would be more impactful and decorative, and would give the place a little pizzazz, and that's always something good, too. So, maybe, maybe you're right and I'm wrong on that. Maybe the upside is more than the downside.
I'd love to comment.
Sure.
I also think it, if you put a stop sign there, you would back traffic up onto 528 potentially, when that light turned green and people coming into that.
Yeah, I was thinking actually a two-way, that the main street would have the right-of-way, and people coming the other way would be stopped. But there's several ways to do it, you're right.
Fair, yeah. I happen to be a fan of the.
Roundabouts?
Roundabouts, very much so. I mean, and by the way, my teenage kids know how to drive them, because they live in Waco, and they're all over Waco.
Well, see, once you get through there, but yeah.
Yeah.
And if you come from the UK here, you got to go the other direction.
Yeah. The best process when riding around in Ireland with your wife driving on the wrong side of the car is just put both your hands over your eyes, and then eventually the roundabout is over.
Yeah, and then there's another one. So, my major concern was the 90-foot, which is going to be corrected, down to 70-foot height, and that the 28 or 29 lots per acre, units per acre takes care of that. There is history in Friendswood of other tracks being only partially developed during financing or some surprise issue that comes up that, it's a surprise by definition because you didn't anticipate it, and I don't know what it might be. But I know that you've talked about that the residential lots would be built after the commercial lots.
Right now, what we have, to speak directly to your question, the five retail pads up front are already spoken for, and plans to develop are already underway. The office building number one, 115,000 square foot, plans are underway right now as we speak. I will be doing the 76,000 four-story with the fire station personally. That's mine, so I can guarantee you that one's going right away. So, we already have one, two, three, four, five retail centers and two office buildings planned before the multifamily developers even inked the deal yet. So, there's zero chance or question that the multifamily would be the first thing off the ground.
So, all the more reason that it would be no issue to put something in the agreement that that's all going to happen, because it's all going to happen. And so, I offline heard that this is a difficult thing to do in the PUD, but it might be able to do in some negotiations between City Council and Mr. Tanos. And so, we may want to have something in there to just make sure that it's an easy thing to give up, because it's going to happen anyway. Just something to document all the understandings that we have here.
The extent of my ability with a partner developer is to write a caveat of the type of use and to be built in a timely manner. And what you're liking me to do is to slow the multifamily developer out, which is never the problem to slow it down.
I'm just trying to make sure that before you got a certificate of occupancy for the multifamily development, that the commercial units were up and running. And so, that's what I'm trying to prevent happening for a myriad of potential reasons that probably won't happen, and I know it's the intent. I just wanted to document it somewhere that had a little bit of bite to it. And so, I don't think it can be done in this form, but it might be able to be done by City Council on some future negotiations. And I'm looking at our City Council member. That was it. That's all I got. Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to this going forward.
Commissioner Bous.
Mine is more of a statement. Did you happen to talk to the Parks and Rec guys in regard to the trails and all of that?
They took offense. No, but we will be handing over between 50 and 60 acres of public park. I believe the first city-owned Harris County park. We're very happy and proud of that. 4.2 miles of trails and full amenities. So, couldn't be happier. Happy to, happy to hand it over.
Thank you.
Brian, I saw on the list for the park presentation that one of the places they visited was your property.
Oh, really? Okay.
It'll look a lot better later.
Yes.
They're already coming to you, probably.
No, I haven't heard that yet, but yeah, I'm, it'll happen. They've got to get rid of the copperheads first.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, we saw about a five-foot copperhead. I've never seen one that big. I didn't get off the four wheeler.
They'll act fully, were two.
For me, all the issues I previously had have been addressed. I do like the comment that Commissioner Rice added. I would like to maybe have that considered if we amend the motion to have that wording added in there.
To restrict the residential on the enumerated lots for the downtown district, is that the, is that?
Correct.
Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes, all of our mixed-use designs are done with retail on the ground floor. The main purpose of this is to bring retail to the city. Living is just something that you have to have to make it work. So, they're all designed that way. We have zero issue with adding that, it's not a problem.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So, with that said, I thank all the, everybody. Any additional comments? Okay.
Okay, so, I have a list of what I think I'm going to amend. You can, I'll chime in and see if I got this right, because I've been taking notes. So, I think what I want to do is amend my motion to include Aubrey's updates on the number of stories and the heights and the limitations that she enumerated initially. Also, amend my motion to include Commissioner Rice's suggestion that we restrict residential on the, from the first-floor lots on, or on lots six, seven, nine, and 10, per being consistent with the downtown district regulations. And then also, to include a recommendation to City Council that commercial front lots are built before residential. That's my motion.
To approve.
To approve with those amendments.
Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so that was the motion for the amendment. Now, we need to vote on the main motion, so.
I was amending my main motion. So, is that, how do I, we need to do that again?
Let's just do it again.
Okay. So, I motion to approve with those amendments.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Yes. Trying to say that, right, the first time.
Thank you, Ms. Tanos. Okay, next, item B. Consider approving the partial preliminary plat of Georgetown Section 1, a subdivision of 21.225 acres located in the I and G and RR County survey, Block 1, Section 23, Abstract 624, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Aubrey, Becky, would you like to provide any staff comments?
Yes, sir. This is the Georgetown development moving forward. This first plat is Section 1, which is going to consist of 31 residential lots and six reserves.
Okay. We'll move on to discussion. Commissioner Sessom.
So, the developer's not here, I take it. So, I like the large lots, looks like a nice subdivision. Maybe you can, you or Becky can describe to me what I'm looking at. On the first three drawings, they had what looked like the 31 lots and the two potential roads in dotted lines of how they're coming in. And then there was a kind of a line going off to the right, and I didn't know if that was just carving out the reserve area or what that actually is. I didn't, I couldn't really understand.
They have, because the detention pond is kind of, I guess, east of the development, they still have to convey the water from the drainage from this property to the detention they still have to convey the water from, the drainage from this property to the detention pond. And so it has to be, like, the easement has to be contained within the plat, so it, it is, it does look a little strange right now, it's going to be like puzzled pieces.
The area of the land, and then there's one little line going across, and, and that is for a drainage line?
For conveyance.
So it's a sewer line, a rainwater sewer.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm sure it was important, it just wasn't clear, it just was kind of like a boxed-out area, two extra drawings just showing it.
Because we've already approved the plat and the construction of the detention pond, they have a temporary easement dedicated to access the detention pond.
Okay.
So that was a separate.
Thank you.
Document in itself, so, like, we're piecing puzzle pieces together.
And, and refresh my memory, 31 lots does not require a second access point, although they eventually will have two access points.
They will, yeah.
Do we know if the first access is going to be Sherry Lane or Georgetown Boulevard? Which one they're doing first, have we heard?
They haven't given us phasing on their construction.
Okay, I mean, I would think either one would be adequate, but they certainly need one. Of course, they need one to bring in their trucks anyway, so, okay. I was going to ask the developer, and you're allowed to say you don't know if you're, if that is the case. Are there any amenities planned for this subdivision, or is it just house after house after house?
There are no common areas or rec centers.
Okay.
The, we're still in the process of amend, or of reviewing the utility services agreement that was put into place in 2014 between the developer and City Council. That did include some parkland dedication in the original agreement. So we're, like I said, we're going back and forth with them right now on clarification.
How that will actually look.
Yes.
Okay, okay. An inexpensive way of doing some of that is to put trails around the retention pond, which is what Mr. Tanos did over behind the Chick-fil-A. And so that, that is what I would expect as a minimum, personally. Georgetown Boulevard is expected to connect all the way into League City eventually. At, I suspect, I forecast it'll be a major thoroughfare going back through there.
The last plan that they gave us, it does not.
Oh, they're going to break it off at the Friendswood limit?
It actually stops about mid their property, it doesn't go all the way to League City. Whether or not, they change that in the future, I don't know, but their current master plan does not have that connecting.
It seems like I saw a drawing with a road that looked similar to this coming from the other side, from League City.
There was one previously, they say they're not doing that anymore, but.
I think because.
Development changes.
Because we basically made the deci, we let them know that, like, because part of this has lots in Alvin, so.
Right.
The Alvin lots have to be served with Alvin City, Alvin Water, Alvin Sewer. So if they continued this development into League City, the League City part would have to be served with League City utilities. And I think the cost of getting utilities to that portion of League City right now is cost prohibitive. So at this point, I don't think that part of the project is being planned.
I'm just worried about this road becoming a very heavily-traveled road, and I'm wondering if, right now, it doesn't look like it's a divided road.
We're working on getting the updated master plan to you as well.
Good.
It's, they've given it to us in our utility services agreement, we asked for it, but, I don't know.
I understand.
So we will bring, but it's like half as many lots as they're originally planning because the locate, the proximity to the gun range, they don't want to put any lots south of the gun range. So they've basically eliminated about two, almost 200 lots out of the development.
Which is a lot of park area potentially, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I can see how negotiations are going on. Do they require, do our ordinance require a sidewalk on the, in the new street side of Sherry Lane or Georgetown Road?
Yes, the public street should have four-foot sidewalks on each side.
That's just part of the code, good, thank you, okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bowes?
Nothing to add there, sir.
Commissioner Kerner?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Conrad? Commissioner Rives? Okay. Nothing additional for me?
Just to let y'all know, the compliance memos on these three plats, they do have comments on them.
Okay.
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 Which would call out the sidewalks, is what you're telling me. The sidewalks are probably in the comments on that.
No, sir, the, under the, on the compliance memo, y'all's options for approval, your approval, approval with conditions and disapproval.
Right.
There are outstanding comments on all three of these plats.
Okay.
So there's, if I read the compliance memo correctly, there's missing data and information which could be rationale for us to reconsider this at another time? Is that how I read the memo?
Yes, this does require further commission consideration.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Okay. All against? Okay, motion passes 42. Okay, next on the agenda, item C, consider approving the partial prelim.
Becky, what's your concern?
Yeah, because the motion was just to approve, so it doesn't include any of those conditions.
You approved it without all those conditions.
Oh, I thought we were approving with those conditions.
Yeah, that's how it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's why I kind of went.
But it is what it is now, right?
Well, how do we, how do we back out of this?
So you can do a motion to reconsider?
I might make a motion to reconsider.
Do you want to?
A second.
We have a motion, a second?
So this would be a motion to reconsider and a second, so you need a vote on that, whether or not to reconsider it.
Okay, all in favor? Passes unanimously? That's what I'm interested in.
So now.
Get back to.
So now we're back to square one.
Okay.
So clarify it now, just.
So either a motion to approve with the conditions or a motion to disapprove. Either way, it's going to have to come back to the commission once they address all those items.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
Go ahead.
Which motion?
To approve with these conditions that are listed in, in the backup material.
Okay. Is that acceptable, Becky? Okay.
Meaning that they, hold on, just so I want to make sure we understand. So that means they have to meet those and bring, bring that back in order to finish out, no.
If you approve with these conditions, then it will not come back to you.
It will come back.
If they approve it?
If they approve with conditions, it still has to come back once they meet those conditions.
Oh, the, okay.
We get to see the conditions.
That's why I want to make sure, I know exactly what we're voting on.
Option, like, two, okay, so yeah, option two or three, conditional approval or disapproval.
So it's conditional approval, which means they need to come back.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did we ever have a second, by the way, I don't think we did.
I have a, I have a motion to approve with conditions.
From Marcus.
A second?
I think we need to reword that to say motion for conditional approval. Because approving with conditions is, like, we do that for minor grammar corrections and things like that, and we don't bring it back.
That is how it's phrased on the.
How about a motion to approve?
Well, we, hold on.
No.
We have a motion and a second already. So.
Let's vote it down.
Can you withdraw it, or?
Amend his motion?
You can vote it down and then have another motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? All against? Motion fails unanimously.
Okay, so we're specifically looking for a motion to conditionally approve.
Okay, I have a question, would we rather do that or make them do it and make them come back?
We need a motion.
Either way, if you conditionally approve or disapprove, it is 100% the same process. So it's up to you what you feel comfortable with. It's just a wording.
Me personally, I'd rather make them finish it all and bring it back corrected. That's me personally, but I'm, I'm not going to here to sway anybody else.
Motion to disapprove.
We have a motion to disapprove, do we have a second? All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. So keep this in consideration with the next two.
C and D, yes.
Consider approving the partial preliminary plat of Georgetown Boulevard Street Dedication Phase 2 being a subdivision of 2.139 acres located in the I and G and R R CO Survey, Block 1, Section 23, Abstract 624, and Hooper and Wade Survey, Section 22, Abstract 491, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas. Is there a motion?
I move to disapprove.
Do we have a second?
My reason is there's still conditions to be resolved for them.
Okay, so we have a motion and a sec, or, I guess, Aubrey, Becky, any comments?
No, just that those two comments are, a partial plat statement is pending in an updated title report.
Okay. Discussion start with Commissioner Bowes?
Nothing other than what I just stated.
Commissioner Rives? Commissioner Conrad? Commissioner Sessom?
Nothing.
Commissioner Kerner?
No comments.
Nothing myself. We have a motion for disapproval, all in favor? Motion is, motion fails?
Motion.
The motion to disapprove.
Motion passes, yes.
I just voted for it.
Double negatives?
I'm getting confused with the word. Okay, item D. Consider approving the preliminary plat of Sherry Lane Street Dedication being a subdivision of 2.171 acres located in the I and G and R R CO Survey, Block 1, Section 23, Abstract 624, Galveston County, Friendswood, Texas. Is there a motion?
Motion to disapprove based on the outstanding conditions that are left, listed in the backup material.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Aubrey, any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Start discussion with Commissioner Sessom?
I, nothing.
No, sir.
Commissioner Kerner?
No comments.
Commissioner Conrad? Commissioner Rives? I have nothing. All in favor? Motion, motion fails. No, motion passes.
Unanimously.
Get it all backwards. With that, thank you everyone for attending this evening. And the October 26, 2023 Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting is now adjourned.